...Village Council, regular meeting for December 3rd, 2019. I'd like to call the meeting to order. And first order of business is I request that everybody either turn off or mute your cell phones or other electronic devices. And I've asked trustee Wedner to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Rob, would you like to check forum?
Certainly. We have two more meetings left in December, the 10th and the 17th. Those dates look okay to everybody?
I won't be here on the 10th.
Right.
Andy, that's your baby.
I won't be here on the 10th.
Okay. Anybody else? Everybody else okay? All right. Thank you.
Okey dokey. Okay. Item number four, public comment. This is the time of the evening where anybody from the audience is able to come to the microphone and share whatever thoughts you might have with council on any item that is not on the agenda. Kate, I'll ask you to wait a second. Is there anybody who would like to speak to any item that is not on the agenda? Come on up, Pat.
Pat Volsimo, Cherry Street. A report on village services from a long-term resident to departments. Got him a letter about a month ago saying, "Okay, it's time to get your water meter changed." So I called them up and I said, "All right, let's set a date." And all of a sudden, at the date that was set, which I had forgotten, there was a nice young man who appeared at the door and he said, "I'm Bob and I'm from..." And it was Bob, but so somebody tell Brian, okay. "I'm from the village and I'm here to change your water meter." And I said, "Fine, but I expected you next week." And he said, "Well, I can come back." "Oh, so nice." I said, "No, let's get it over with." I said, "The letter said it would only take an hour or less." He said, "Well, we'll see what we can do about that." He was out of there, everything done, 25 minutes, and very, very polite. So I was proud of that, pleased with that. Tell Brian Keys, he's not here, I'd hope to. The second one was had to do with the... What was it? Oh, dear. I'd forgotten.
Leaf collection.
That's it. Remember the horrible storm? My sidewalk was filled with every branch from every tree in the whole block. And it was just my sidewalk. Weird wind. Anyway, I said, "Well, can my landscaper get over here?" "No, this is on village property." I think some of the sidewalk village property? Yeah. Okay. All right. So I called and, oh, I'll think of it. In a minute. He was very nice, too. This is 8:30 in the morning, that morning. And he said, "I'll..." Brendan, Brendan, okay. He said, "I'll see what I can do." And I said, "Look, if kids were going to school today, they couldn't walk on the sidewalk. I'll refer." I said, "Okay." This is 8:30. 10:30, phew, everything was cleaned up. It was marvelous. So I'm very pleased. Thanks, Steve, and thank your department. And I hope to be as happy when the utility bill comes next month.
Thanks, Pat.
I know whose name to use now when I call. I know whose name to use from now on when I call.
Anybody else have anything? Seeing none, I'll invite Kate up to the microphone.
Good evening. My name is Kate Cassel McNally and I reside at 523 Elder Lane here in Weneka. However, it's in my role as the Chair of the 2019 Weneka Caucus Council, or WCC Chair, that I'm honored to address you this evening. As many of you already know, the WCC is a nonpartisan group of volunteers who serve to represent the residents of Weneka and some of our neighboring villages, to the extent that they are represented by the elected boards, in nominating candidates for board positions on the four governing bodies, conducting an annual village survey, generating the platforms for each of the governing bodies, and holding two open town hall events each year. In an ongoing effort to increase transparency and communication between the WCC and each of the elected boards, the 2019 Executive Committee determined that, once the platforms for each of the governing boards were approved at the fall town hall, which took place in mid-November, a member of the Executive Committee would formally present them at each of the meetings, such as this one. As Max Weigant, the Chair of this year's Village Committee, was unable to attend this evening, it's my pleasure to be with you. So the crafting of the platforms is a tool that's used by the residents to share concerns and priorities with the elected bodies and to hold them accountable to the desires of the residents. Platforms generally flow from the questions that are posed on the annual survey, and the Village Committee is required to submit a platform each year, while the other three major committees, library, schools, and parks, are required to submit a platform only in odd-numbered years, but are given the freedom to do so in the even-numbered years as well. I'd like to read to you the 2019 village platform, which can be found as the first page of the packet I've presented to you, right behind the cover page. Also in that packet is the Pulse of Weneka, which is a brief synopsis of the 2019 survey results for all four of the governing bodies, as well as the full results of the Village Committee questions on the survey, which include all of the open response comments from people that took the survey this year. So the first plank is, "The village of Weneka," the village, "council should endeavor to cooperate with the boards and finance committees of the other three taxing authorities." That is, the Board of Trustees of the Weneka Northfield Public Library District, the Weneka Park District Board of Commissioners, and the School Board of the Weneka Public Schools, regarding the order and priority of projected major capital expenditures. Plank number two, "The village council should lower the cost of permits for rehabilitation for historic homes. In addition to reviewing rehabilitation costs, the village should consider other options to preserve historic homes." I wanted to note that this year, each of the four major committees had an identical first plank of their platform, which encourages the cooperation of the four boards and their finance committees. Again, the quote is, "Regarding the order and priority of projected major capital expenditures." This notion of having the same plank in each of the platforms was a reaction to an oft-repeated sentiment that we heard both formally and informally this year, that essentially projected a fear or concern, or at least a question, that the Weneka taxing districts might not be speaking to each other about who's asking for what money and in what order. And so the plank is just intended to gently nudge the boards to remember to talk to each other and then to communicate to the taxpayers. I know that you have a very full agenda this evening, and I appreciate your time. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have now, but I'd also welcome you to reach out with any questions via the email address that's listed on the cover page of the pack that I've presented. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Kate. Can I ask a question? I just noticed on the demographics of your summary of who responded, it was 59% female.
Yeah.
Is the village more female than male? Or is this just a men don't respond on these things?
I think that the brief answer is, I don't know. We, you know, the demographics that we have, I think, are outdated. They're from a few years ago, just in terms of what our components are, just because I believe that the county doesn't put those things out, you know, instantaneously. Our sense is that, you know, there was, there are a lot of women that were responding this year, in particular based on school-related questions.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, I really appreciate it, Kate. And I have to say that in the time that I've been up here, this is the first time that I can remember since... No, there was a gap, so... But since about 2007, 2008, did a member of the caucus, as they actually come and reported to village council, the activities at the town hall meeting and the platforms. I mean, you know, typically, I know it's discussed there in great length, but I think it's important that that come out and that the folks in the community know what you guys do, how you do it, and how to participate. So I appreciate you coming out.
Thank you. The caucus is a 100-plus-year-old institution, and we are amongst a few that continue to be ongoing, especially in the middle of the country, for this long. And we think it's incredibly important to keep this going, to keep the momentum, and part of that is by, you know, keeping up the communication, not only amongst the residents, but between the individual boards and the WCC.
Yep, great job.
I have one more quick thing, Kate.
Yeah.
If you don't mind, not if you brought up the history of the caucus, maybe just for people watching, the audience.
Yeah.
Talk about past membership and current membership.
Absolutely. So the caucus council is intended to be a much larger organization than it is presently. The caucus itself is every member of, every resident of Weneka of voting age, 18 or older, whether you know about it or not, you're one of us, as well as all of the taxing districts, and I mentioned this in my remarks, all the taxing districts that are served by the boards. So for instance, for the library board, the library district, Northfield residents, 18 and over, are considered part of the caucus as well. The caucus council is the volunteer organization, intended to be a 68-member organization. This year, we had a bang-up year, 25 people that came out, showed up, and were willing to volunteer their time and efforts and energy. So part of this is, you know, kind of getting more people and, you know, frankly, some fresher faces, some people that have maybe not been involved in our local government before, and are thinking about, you know, kind of coming out and, you know, coming up, how to get some information and, you know, some familiarity with, you know, items that the village is, you know, thinking about and that, you know, frankly, talking to each other. And so sometimes that's as important as anything else. So we're welcoming people in. It's a January to December year for us, and so we're coming to the very end of our year. It's been a really great year, and our executive committee, this is my second year on the executive committee, has just been a really fantastic group of people. You, as I'm sure you all know, if you can enjoy each other's company when you're dealing with the hard stuff, then you know that you're in good company. So I'm very fortunate to have had a great executive committee this year.
Hey, thank you.
Kate, and I'd like to add, that's a really great question, thank you, John. You know, as a person who has served two different times on the caucus council, I actually, I was encouraged, I think my first year I lived here, to join, and I was really startled, had never heard of it, but it's a great way for people to learn about our village and to understand its components. And I think that's really nice, is that it's being completely across the village and cross-generational. So, you know, these days, as we're looking to build community and trying to, you know, meet your, meet residents and understand the community better, it's fabulous for that. But also in terms of, you know, we have an unusual village, you know, we have our own utilities, you know, we have these four really great, different entities, and so for people to understand how their village works, it is, this is a remarkable experience. I want to compliment you all in terms of the turnout for the survey. This was a pretty high response, you know, in recent years, so that's terrific. So hats off to you guys, because obviously the more people who respond, the better the information.
Yeah.
So, and also, thank you for including the comments, because for the boards, the specific comments are really useful. So thank you for taking the time to do that as well.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Great. Thanks again, Kate.
Thank you very much.
We really appreciate it. Good stuff. Okay. I feel like we're missing something. Oh, the reports, right? Okay. Oh, that goes first? Okay. Never mind. Yeah, it comes after four, right? All right, item number five, gas-powered leaf blower presentation. Luisa Hernandez is a fourth-grade student at Greeley School, and she has prepared a presentation for the council about a proposed ban on gas-powered leaf blowers. Luisa, you're already up there. You're quick.
I want to start by saying that I'm so glad to be here today to talk to all of you. Health and Pollution Problems with Gas-Powered Leaf Blowers by Luisa Hernandez. Why I Came. I am here today to talk about a problem that is still in Weneka, even though some other cities have already solved it, gas-powered leaf blowers. Today, I will discuss the three most troubling problems with gas-powered leaf blowers. Potential Hearing Damage. Gas-powered leaf blowers cause lots of problems. A leaf blower operates at 115 decibels. That's really loud. Federal Workplace Safety Authorities have declared that 85 decibels is the upper limit of safe human exposure. Many studies have shown that the level is even lower for damage to children's hearing. Even more troubling is the fact that the sound made by gas-powered leaf blowers is a low-frequency noise that travels farther than middle-frequency or higher-frequency sounds. The next slide is a decibel reading for my sister's bedroom, with only one gas-powered leaf blower operating next door. Usually, there's two or three blowing at a time. So this is a decibel reading for my sister's room. The current is 95, which is over the limit for safe human exposure, and even the average was over the limit. The maximum at the time was 102 decibels. Increasing Air Pollution. Gas-powered leaf blowers are so bad for the environment. They burn fossil fuels and allow tons of pollution. They have no pollution control like cars. There's already so much pollution with factories that burn fossil fuels, cars, and so much more, we don't need to add to the pollution with leaf blowers. Not-so-fun fact, using a gas-powered leaf blower for 30 minutes is equal to driving a Ford F-150 truck 3,900 miles, as far as Texas to Alaska.
Wow.
Unable to enjoy our outdoor and indoor spaces. Doesn't it sound relaxing to lay down with a lemonade in your Porsche chair? Well, guess what? That's not really possible with all those leaf blowers. Leaf blowers are so annoying and loud. Also, over 8 million people in the U.S. currently work from home, which helps eliminate a large amount of pollution from cars. The constant noise of leaf blowers can make working from home difficult, or even impossible, for many people in Weneka. Finally, it is tough for kids to enjoy their backyards when the sound of leaf blowers is blasting much of the time. It is no surprise that parents are trying to get their kids to be active outside, instead of playing on computers or phones, but it is tough when it's so noisy outside. A Good Solution For This. A good solution is for Weneka to ban gas-powered leaf blowers and only allow electric leaf blowers. They are much better for the environment, and they won't cause many of the problems I've described. For example, they only go to 64 decibels and emit no air pollution. I know Weneka already has a seasonal ban, but this ban is not consistently enforced. I could hear leaf blowers most of the time in the summer, and still leave much of the fall and spring where the blowers are going almost nonstop. Other Communities That Have Banned Gas-Powered Leaf Blowers. Lots of cities have already banned gas-powered leaf blowers. Washington, D.C., Aspen, Colorado, and several in California. Weneka is such a great place to live and a leader in many ways. It is my hope that we can be a leader on this very important problem, too. Thank you for listening. You may wonder why this is important for me to come here today. One of the main reasons is that I have a sister who has hearing loss.
Pardon me, I'm sorry.
She said her sister has hearing loss.
Oh, really? Oh, my. Well, that's a good reason. I'd like to open it up to council for comment and questions for Luisa.
I'd like to jump right in. Luisa, I can't thank you enough for coming today to make this presentation, because this is a pet project of mine, and I've, I was on the council a million years ago when we first put, instituted the seasonal ban, and you're right, nobody pays attention to it. I think I'm the only person that uses an electric blower in the summer. So I've been trying to think about how we can better enforce it, and it would be really great if we could teach more kids about it, so that they can tell their parents, because I think if the kids tell their parents about it, I mean, that's how recycling got going, was that we started in the schools and the kids got really excited about it. So I would love to talk to you about maybe getting, you know, getting in the kids in schools to get excited about this. What do you think?
Yeah, sure.
Would that be a good idea? What do you think, Chris?
I love it.
Yeah, yeah. I just, I am thrilled you came today. This is awesome. Thank you so much.
Other comments or questions for Luisa?
So I have a backpack electric leaf blower, and this thing is a monster, and it can blow harder than any gas blower, but it's quiet. And actually, I've got four kids, and except for my very youngest, who she would probably be crushed if I put it on her, they love using it. And I think when the seasonal ban was initially passed, the technology wasn't where it is now.
Right.
I think that now, the technology is good enough to have a year-round ban, and I would strongly support us adopting a year-round ban. I don't feel there's much more that we need to do than just to commit ourselves to doing that.
How is that powered? Yours?
It's got a lithium-ion battery.
Oh, okay.
And it can run at max speed for about 20 to 25 minutes. I've got multiple batteries, so I use it, and, you know, it's just like, instead of having to fill up gas, I just slap on the new battery, put the other one on the charger, charges up in about 15 minutes. And it's outstanding, and it's instant power. And, you know, one of the problems with the gas blowers is, once you fire them up, you know, even when you're not really blowing, they're still rumbling.
Right, right.
And I also grew up doing landscape work and working on a farm around chainsaws and leaf blowers, and I have hearing loss because of that. So I am completely sympathetic to that argument also.
Is Chief Hornstein here for this topic?
Well, he is now.
Maybe you can explain to Luisa about the enforcement of the leaf-blowing ban.
Hi, Luisa.
Come on up, chief.
Outstanding presentation. So they are definitely very loud and frustrating, no question about it. So we try and, when we see people, well, first of all, we try and send letters out to all the landscaping companies at the beginning of the season to let them know about the ban. And then, when we see people that are actively doing that, our officers are encouraged to approach them, if they're not already aware of it, if they're either warned or then cited. So we definitely have stepped up enforcement and written more citations in the last two years than we have the previous, probably three or four before that. But I share your concerns as well, that it is a challenge to get them to comply, to get them to look for alternative methods of using the leaf blowers, like the electric ones. But I think it's a great presentation, and I'm certainly all for suggestions for getting ways to having our landscapers, and residents for that matter, to comply with it.
Yeah, I think, I think the key is that it needs to be the residents, the clients of the landscaping companies insisting that, that the landscapers use the gas blowers, because, you know, people I've talked to, landscapers, they're like, "Well, you know, the clients don't, it doesn't seem to matter to them." So I think we need to educate everybody, so this is great.
Thank you.
Any other thoughts or comments?
I went out and bought a, I went out and bought a leaf blower this summer to avoid getting in trouble with the police on the, on the ban, so you're right, it's a good plan. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's awesome, Luisa. And, you know, over the summer, several times, we had discussions about this with Chief Hornstein, about, about our concerns and how noisy it is. I work at home, and during the week, you know, at 10 o'clock in the morning or 11 o'clock in the morning, when I'm on the phone, I can hear the leaf blowers buzzing all over the neighborhood, particularly on Thursdays and Fridays, which is when most people get their... But it really is, you know, as you put it, it's really annoying and it's unnecessary. And trustee Kreip is right, I bought one of the battery-operated things, too, not the backpack ones, but, you know, they got the big hefty batteries. And actually, my landscaper, when he shows up now, I think, I think, I think our officer cited him somewhere else in the, in the village, because he just lets himself in the garage and takes my leaf blower now during the summer, when you really, you know, you don't need those super-high-powered leaf blowers for grass clippings and, and the like. And Andy, if you say that they're now powerful enough to...
It's more powerful than any gas blower I ever used.
Wow.
In the landscape company growing up.
So when I saw this on the agenda, I was really excited, because it's been one of my concerns for a long period of time, and it's good to see that, that young people in this community care about it, too. And maybe if we get together, like Penny says, and work together, we can find a way to get this done. And Andy's right, you know, I think the way it starts is, you know, we have a study session about it, let people weigh in and maybe move towards a ban, so...
You know, I'll tell you, I've been doing this now for, I guess, more than five years. It seems long. But I've had many people send me emails and talk to me about this gas leaf blower thing, and always against it. I have never once, in all the time I've been doing this, had anyone said, "You can't ban gas leaf blowers." I love those things. It's never happened. And I hope this ends up in the paper, and I would challenge anyone in this village, anyone who's in love with their two-cycle gas leaf blower, send me an angry email saying, "How dare you? You cannot ban those things. Otherwise, I fully want us to ban these things, like, soon."
So do we need a study session? How do we make it happen?
Well, we could always just direct the village attorney to prepare an ordinance. I mean...
That's, I would like to, you know, put that out in the press, and, you know, I will bet you money, there's not going to be an angry email. And this is a town where, when people are upset, they'll let you know. Sometimes they'll make it kind of personal, they'll question, and that's okay, I welcome that, it's kind of entertaining. But I've never had anyone say, "My God, I love my leaf blower so much, you can't take it, you can't pry it from my..."
That's because most people don't own one at all, Andy.
Well, that's part of it, yeah. Most people don't mow their own lawn, so they really don't care. But, yeah, I think we should just do it, so...
I don't know. I mean, I think we've got to be a little careful on this, because, I mean, I'm preventing it, but I don't know what the implications would be for all the landscape companies. You know, there are implications to doing that.
We should have a study session, but then we should do it.
If we just find out what the impact would be if we did that, you know, are these companies not going to be coming up here? I don't know.
Well, they already come up during the summer with the ban, so...
I just don't, it has to do with enforcement, if you're going to ban them, you got to enforce it.
Well, I think having, having good information and staying on our ground and, you know, having good, good intelligence, and it does require investment in new machines. Sorry, I don't have my... It does require investment in new machines, but it's to their workers' benefits as well as, because, you know, the amount of emission, you know, the, the gas emissions that they're taking in and the sound is terrible for the employees. So, you know, in the long run, it's, it's, it's a health issue. It's not just convenience, it's health, so...
I mean, I think if we reached out, if we had a study session, reached out to some of the landscape companies and...
Yeah, right, right. Have a conversation.
You know, at least have the conversation and go into it, believe that it...
Let's work on it before the summer comes around.
Yeah.
Sound good?
Yes. Thank you.
Luisa, thank you so much, we really appreciate it. Good job. Excellent job. Wow. All right, moving along, now we will go to reports. First of all, trustees, Jack, we'll start with you.
No report.
Andy?
No report.
John?
No report.
Bob?
No report.
Ian? Penny? Wow. Village Attorney?
No report tonight.
Village Manager?
No report, thank you.
And Village President, that's me. I do have a couple of things. Number one, the annual tree lighting ceremony is this coming Friday in Dwyer Park, not the train station park, and we're looking forward to a great turnout. The weather looks like it's going to be good, and there'll be a vendor market down there in the parking lot, and it'll really be a great time for everybody to kind of get together and begin the holiday season as a community, so we're all looking forward to that. Secondly, I have three things I wanted to report on. Pat, I feel like you now. What was I going to say?
Leaf collection.
Well, one of them was, was that the negotiations with both School District 36 and the Weneka Park District continue relative to stormwater. There is an outside possibility that we may be presenting our solution for a partnership with the Park District next, a week from this Thursday, on the 12th. Don't put that in the books yet, we still have a long way to go. And we have some meetings coming up with District 36 on their contribution and participation, and I wish Kate was here to hear all the participation that is going on between, between the taxing bodies relative to solving the stormwater problem. And whatever number three is, if I remember it, I'll jump in at the end of the meeting, so that's that. Okay, approval of the agenda. Does any trustee wish to remove an item on the consent agenda for a separate vote? Hearing none, may I have a motion to approve the final form of the agenda?
Second.
Voice vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Consent agenda, I will now ask the volunteer... Consent agenda, I will now ask the volunteer and unpaid village clerk to read the items on the consent agenda.
You're welcome. Approval of village council meeting minutes for November 5th, 2019, regular meeting, November 12th, 2019, study session. Approval of the warrant list dated November 15th through the 27th, 2019, in the amount of $1,094,780.71. Ordinance number M22, 2019, amending a special use ordinance for parking lot at 454 to 462 Winnetka Avenue for adoption. And resolution number R89, 2019, waiving bidding and approving a contract with Fairbanks Morse LLC for repairs to diesel generator turbocharger for adoption.
Thanks, Rob. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda by omnibus vote?
Second.
Roll call vote.
Trustee Wedner?
Yes.
Trustee Kreip?
Yes.
Trustee Swerk?
Yes.
Trustee Dearborn?
Yes.
Trustee Lanfear?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you. Item nine, ordinances and resolutions, budget rate resolutions. On November 19th, the village council completed its review of the 2020 budget, held a public hearing, and introduced the 2020 utility rates and general fees. The budget and rate resolutions are up for adoption tonight, and our finance director, Tim Sloth, is here to review. Tim, take it away.
Thank you. Good evening. The budget and rate resolutions were introduced at the last council meeting, and today we are seeking final confirmation. The budget has been publicly reviewed at two prior meetings, including an all-day council review on October 29th, and a public hearing on November 19th. The total budget is $79 million, of which the operating portion is $60.5 million, which is an increase of 1%. The budget is balanced, and the operating expenditures are fully funded by operating revenues, and the budget document is available for public viewing at the library, and is also on the village's website. Just some brief comments on the budget.
I remembered what my other thing was.
Budget related.
No, again, it's not budget related, so we'll continue on, I'll hop in later on. All right, first, I would like to call for comments or questions from anybody in the audience on the budget and rate resolutions. Seeing none, anybody up here on the dais have any other questions or comments regarding this?
Well, I just want to pipe in, I looked at the caucus platform information, and I just want to be sure, and I think we have a really nice letter of transmittal on the budget, but again, to reinforce that, what the village is doing for our portion of the taxing is that we have kept the budget flat, and we are not increasing taxes, and we have some increase in fees to be at parity with what, you know, water and electric are costing in neighboring communities. But I just, I think it's super important to acknowledge how carefully the village has managed its finances, and for people to know that. And, because clearly, it's not getting through because of a number of these comments that we see on the caucus questionnaire. So, thank you, Tim, and Rob, and I just want to put that out there for the record.
Thanks, Ian, and so true. Other comments, questions? Hearing none, we'll start the fun, and I'll start with resolution number R86, 2019, a resolution adopting the annual budget for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2020, and ending December 31, 2020. This is up for adoption. May I have a motion to adopt resolution number R86, 2019?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Trustee Dearborn?
Yes.
Trustee Lanfear?
Yep.
Trustee Kaledarchi?
Yes.
Trustee Kreip?
Yes.
Trustee Swerk?
Yes.
Trustee Wedner?
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolution number R87, 2019, utility rates and fees. May I have a motion to adopt resolution number R87, 2019?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Trustee Lanfear?
Yes.
Trustee Wedner?
Yes.
Trustee Dearborn?
Yes.
Trustee Swerk?
Yes.
Trustee Kreip?
Yes.
Trustee Kaledarchi?
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolution number R88, 2019, general fees for adoption. May I have a motion to adopt resolution number R88, 2019?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Trustee Lanfear?
Yes.
Trustee Wedner?
Yes.
Trustee Dearborn?
Yes.
Trustee Swerk?
Yes.
Trustee Kreip?
Yes.
Trustee Kaledarchi?
Yes.
Motion carries. Property tax levy and abatement ordinances. The tax levy ordinance sets the village's 2019 property tax levy to fund village operations. For the sixth consecutive year, the village is keeping its base tax levy unchanged, so that existing residents will not see a property tax increase. The property tax levy also requires the adoption of a tax levy ordinance for a special service area and two ordinances to abate the portion of the levy that pertains to the Series 2013 and 2014 general obligation bonds. And Tim will go ahead and review this for us.
Thank you. Again, the property tax levy was introduced at the last council meeting, and it was discussed thoroughly as part of the budget review process. As President Rince mentioned, this is the sixth year in a row that the property tax payable to the village will remain unchanged, and the property tax levy totals $15,473, and again, is a key funding source for the village and provides for over 50% of the general fund revenues, which is the main operating count of the village. The two abatement ordinances abate taxes that would otherwise be levied in absence of the abatement ordinance, so...
Great, thank you, Tim. Any comments, questions? Audience or council? We'll move forward. Okay, first one, ordinance number M18, 2019, ordinance levying taxes for the year 2019. May I have a motion to adopt ordinance number M18, 2019?
So moved.
Second. Roll call vote.
Trustee Dearborn?
Yes.
Trustee Kreip?
Yes.
Trustee Kaledarchi?
Yes.
Trustee Lanfear?
Yes.
Trustee Wedner?
Yes.
Trustee Swerk?
Yes.
Motion carries. Ordinance number M19, 2019, and ordinance levying taxes for the year 2019 for Village of Winnetka, Cook County, Illinois, Special Service Area Number Three. May I have a motion to adopt ordinance number M19, 2019?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Trustee Kreip?
Yes.
Trustee Wedner?
Yes.
Trustee Lanfear?
Yes.
Trustee Kaledarchi?
Yes.
Trustee Swerk?
Yes.
Trustee Dearborn?
Yes.
Motion carries. Ordinance number M20, 2019, and ordinance abating the tax heretofore levied for the year 2019 to pay the principal and interest on $9 million of general obligation bonds, Series 2013, of the Village of Winnetka, Cook County, Illinois. May I have a motion to adopt ordinance number M20, 2019?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Trustee Kreip?
Yes.
Trustee Wedner?
Yes.
Trustee Lanfear?
Yep.
Trustee Kaledarchi?
Yes.
Trustee Swerk?
Yes.
Trustee Dearborn?
Yes.
Motion carries. I think we're getting close to the end here. Ordinance number M21, 2019, and ordinance abating the tax heretofore levied for the year 2019 to pay the principal of an interest on $7,500,000 general obligation bonds, Series 2014, of the Village of Winnetka, Cook County, Illinois. May I have a motion to adopt ordinance number M21, 2019?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Trustee Kreip?
Yes.
Trustee Wedner?
Yes.
Trustee Lanfear?
Yep.
Trustee Kaledarchi?
Yes.
Trustee Swerk?
Yes.
Trustee Dearborn?
Yes.
And that finishes our budget and tax levy items.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tim, good job. All right, item C, ordinance number MC10, 2019, amending village code concerning cannabis and drug paraphernalia. This is up for introduction. The village attorney has reviewed the village code pertaining to the possession and use of cannabis paraphernalia for consistency with state law. A draft code amendment has been prepared to provide uniformity under the new Illinois cannabis statute. And here to review this is Police Chief Mark Hornstein. Mark?
President Rince, council, just a few remarks. So, in working with the village attorney, the goal was to accomplish a few different things, and the biggest thing is to bring the code into compliance with the Illinois Cannabis Regulation and Tax Act. And then beyond that, there were four, four things that I saw as police chief that our officers were likely to encounter moving forward after January 1, and we wanted the code to be able to, allow our officers to address that. One being underage possession and/or consumption, two being consumption in a public place, three being illegal transportation as it relates to transportation in a motor vehicle, and fourth being consumption in a privately-owned premises that would be open to the general public. So by revising our code, those are four tools that our officers would have to conduct enforcement after January 1. The other thing, too, is that by amending the code, we'll be able to allow to continue to use our administrative adjudication process, which we currently use now for a number of different violations. It allows for a convenient way of our officers being able to assign someone to come to local village ordinance, village administrative hearing court, versus assigning it to the Second District Municipal Court to have a judge determine a resolution over there. So those are the prepared remarks that I have, and I'll be happy to entertain any questions at this time.
All right, does anybody up here have any questions for Chief?
Chief or county, or...
Or both?
My only question is on the paraphernalia, and I guess this is more to Peter. In terms of licensing the sale of paraphernalia, first off, does the village, is the village getting set up to establish a licensing procedure for the sale of paraphernalia?
I guess so.
That's Chief question? And the second question, I guess, is, you know, what, where can this paraphernalia be sold, and what exactly are we talking about in terms of the paraphernalia?
Yeah, so right now, there's, we don't have an established license for that currently. If we were to have somebody that was looking to engage in that type of a business operation, they would have to come to us, put it in writing, detail what is it they were looking for. We would then work with the village attorney to develop what that license would be. Council would have to evaluate that, also determine setting a fee for what the license would be, ultimately.
But conceptually, a pharmacy, for instance, could sell paraphernalia used for the use of cannabis recreationally. Is that what I'm understanding?
Well, not without it becoming licensed.
No, I understand that, but that's, that's what this is allowing for. We're saying that we will have a licensing procedure, am I understanding this correctly?
No. We just amended the definition so that if somebody comes in and asks for it, that they'll fit into one definition or another, so then, as the chief said, we can investigate it, bring it back to the council, see if you...
Okay, so we'll react when and if that request comes before us?
Correct.
Okay.
I have a question, not that I'm familiar with the use or the paraphernalia. It seems to me that I've seen this stuff throughout Illinois for many, many, many years for sale all over the place, and it's not necessarily for marijuana, possibly. So, I mean, how do you know it's not for, like, hookah lounges and that kind of stuff? How do you separate that? I've never seen, like, a business license for that type of product.
Well, I mean, typically, when we encounter it, is we would do a presumptive test to check for a presence of cannabis.
I guess it's more about the licensing, if you want to sell that stuff in Winnetka.
Yeah, I mean, we...
I mean, if you have someone from selling it right now, at a Walgreens or any other kind of store, I'm not sure.
As a nicotine-related product...
Right, or not nicotine, just something you smoke, I mean...
Yeah, I mean, we haven't encountered that here in the village or anyone's attempted to sell paraphernalia.
Right.
So...
I mean, I go back to, you know, the 70s, and the record store in Harlem Irving, Rolling Stone, I mean, the whole store was full of it, you know? So it's not a new thing, but yet legally selling it in Illinois.
Peter, would we be able to, could we ban, if we wanted to, the sale of drug paraphernalia within the village? Well, it would be, as the chief has said pursuant to the question, what is drug paraphernalia? There's paraphernalia that can be used for non-drug, for nicotine products, or for tobacco products that are legal. So, just be an analysis of what they were actually going to do. But we do, I mean, there are some communities that specifically identify the use. They ban smoke shops, or they ban, you know, cigar places, you know, hookah lounges. Some don't, some do. Do we ban that now?
Don't start picking on cigars.
But I mean, like, hookah shops and cigar shops and things like that...
Not so much a shop, it's just the stuff you might smoke it in.
Yeah, but I don't think, my recollection is that neither of those are defined in our zoning code, so they would be prohibited because they're not specifically allowed.
Not that I know, but...
I'd have to look, but I think that's what...
No, honestly, but can't you go over to the 7-Eleven, or the gas station up on Green Bay and pick up a pack of rolling papers? I'm pretty sure they probably sell them, and I mean, yeah, and all the high school students that are purchasing those rolling papers are using it for tobacco purposes. So, I mean, that's the problem, is you really can't define this anyway, you know, and whether a little pipe is going to be used for tobacco, I mean, anybody who is into smoking pipes generally doesn't use cheap, you know, poorly manufactured pipes to smoke really expensive tobacco, but, you know, the argument can be made that they could, so it's, I think the classification issue, because it's become something that we could waste a lot of brain power on and never get any further than where it already is. So, the reality of it is, is that the, you know, after January 1st, recreational use is going to be permitted, and I would bet that right outside our borders, you go to, you know, maybe a liquor store just outside our borders in another community, and the paraphernalia will be available there. It's just inevitable.
Yeah, I guess from a zoning standpoint, if it's not clearly identified as a use, it would end up coming through as a special use permit, then we can look at it that way.
Or an amendment.
Or an amendment, right, right.
There you go.
So I think that's, should be maybe our thinking forward on it.
Good call.
Can I ask a question on the transport, and how would you know that someone had drugs in their car unless you were searching it? And wasn't there a ruling? I think one of our own residents, Gary Feinerman, argued it about search and seizure, and that it would be illegal to investigate a car without having a warrant to do that, right? So, I don't know how we would be able to demonstrate transportation without violation of due process and privacy.
So typically, if an officer encounters somebody traveling in a motor vehicle, and there's illegal transportation, it means that it's not in a sealed container, which means it's typically going to give off an odor of smell. The officers who have experience and understanding what, how, what the smell of cannabis is, detect that smell. The courts have clearly ruled that the odor of cannabis coming from inside the passenger compartment of a vehicle does constitute probable cause. At that point, the, you know, occupants are ordered out of the vehicle, or search of the vehicle is conducted, and then if it leads to the discovery of that open cannabis and/or any other contraband, then it is subject to seizure, and then subject, the person possession of that is subject to potential prosecution.
But that would only be in an underage case, because aren't adults allowed to possess cannabis now with the new law?
Not while they're driving, not while they're driving.
So, no, so it's...
They can't use it, but you can't prove that they were using it, even if they smell like it, maybe their friend was using it. And so how are you, I mean, I just, sticky wicket, I mean, the, I'm not a pot user, okay? I just want that out there, but I am someone who believes in privacy, and so, you know, I just want that out there, but I am someone who believes in privacy, and so, you know, if it's, if it's legal to, to possess it, when are we, we're now in the position of determining whether or not they've used it improperly?
So, if, if an odor's coming from inside a vehicle and a search of that vehicle occurs, and it turns out that that cannabis is being transported in a container that is not an approved container that's issued from a dispensary, that's going to constitute unlawful transportation, you know, hence the violation. So, no, does it mean the person's going to get cited for unlawful possession if they're over 21 and it's under 30 grams, or if it's under 15 grams, if it's an out-of-state resident? Then no, the person isn't subject to that citation, but they would be subject to the illegal transportation citation.
I think it's very similar to alcohol. You cannot have, like, an open bottle of alcohol in your backseat. It could be in the trunk, and I believe the same thing with cannabis, it has to be outside of the, of the compartment of where you sit. I could be wrong, but-
It's, it's gonna be, and we're gonna have to see what these containers are looking like from these dispensaries, but they're gonna have to be in these dispensary-issued sealed containers. You can't just have it in a Ziploc baggie or some other coffee can or some other container.
And typically, your, your first indication is going to be a traffic violation or a car not having a taillight or something, right? I mean-
Smoke pouring out the windows.
Well, possible.
It's generally-
You're dealing with a rocket scientist, usually.
You know, generally-
We love talking about this.
Generally, a traffic violation that, that leads to the, the face-to-face encounter with the motorist, and then it's, whether it's detecting the odor coming from it, or if it's a situation where it was a moving violation and the person was weaving, weaving all over the road, then the officer right away is going to start a DUI investigation, you know, looking for certain indicators and cues that they pick up on that they're trained on.
Great, thanks.
Interesting. All right, I'd like to open it up to the public. Would anybody from the audience like to comment on this issue? Seeing none, we'll bring it back up. Any, any final thoughts on the good advice from our attorney and our village attorney and our chief of police?
Just thank you for being vigilant, reviewing. It's, I know it's tedious, and, but I appreciate it.
Excellent, all right, well, I'll bring it up here for motion. May I have a motion to introduce ordinance number MC-10, 2019?
So moved. Second.
Roll call vote.
Trustee Kaledarchi?
Yes.
Trustee Kreip?
Yes.
Trustee Swerk?
Yes.
Trustee Dearborn?
Yes.
Trustee Wedner?
Yes.
Trustee Lanfear?
Yes.
Trustee Kaledarchi?
Yes.
Trustee Swerk?
Yes.
Trustee Dearborn?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thanks, chief.
Thank you.
And Steve, I know it's only going to take one second, so I, you haven't been here for a while, so we're, we're getting our pound of fish, but I wanted, before I went any further and I forgot again, the other thing that I wanted to share in my president's report is, I've recently been contacted by the applicant on behalf of the One Winnetka Project. Actually, I was contacted by John Mietmieski, their architect, who was inquiring and actually trying to get information on how they could bring in yet another proposal for another concept. They were trying to push it on the agenda before the end of the year, namely the December 17th meeting, and I explained to them that they would just be too soon, and that any, any further presentations by that group or any group, that we have a high expectation of more than just block zoning diagrams, that we really need to see architecture and understand to a much greater degree what sort of project that they're actually presenting. So, just putting the community and you guys on alert that there seems to be a push to bring back yet another concept from the same group, and there's a good chance we'll be hearing that in January or not, depending on how things work out and the other various legal aspects of that transaction. So, anyway, I can't believe I forgot that. All right, now we'll move ahead. Item D, resolution number R-90, 2019, intergovernmental with Park District for Bowl Parkway land transfer, and this is up for adoption. As part of a stormwater sewer upgrade in the Bowl Parkway neighborhood, the village has approached the Park District about assuming ownership of a strip of land along with a Park District storm sewer. The Park District agreed to sell the land and infrastructure to the village for $10. And here to review that is Public Works Director Steve Saunders.
Thank you, good evening. This item starts on page 98 of your agenda materials, and just for clarification, there's a diagram on page 100 that shows the strip of land. It consists of two parcels. As best we can tell, the 24-inch storm sewer was originally installed to drain Corwin Park all the way down to the south to the forest preserve. That connection has since been severed at Tower Road, and the storm sewer has only served to drain the backyards of the Bowl Parkway drainage area. But in designing the Bowl Parkway improvement, it was determined that that storm sewer would be useful as an area to convey water to a pump station that would lift stormwater into the new Tower Road storm sewer system. So we've been working with the Park District for a while. Originally, we thought we would just do an intergovernmental agreement allowing us to use their storm sewer, but as we got farther into it, we realized on both sides, it really made no sense for the Park District to own a disconnected storm sewer that provides no benefit to any of their facilities. So we thought it made more sense to just formalize a transfer of ownership of that infrastructure to the village. So that would be accomplished through the intergovernmental agreement that was prepared in conjunction with our village attorney and their corporation counsel. That is contained in your agenda materials. Probably the only thing that's a little different about this than a simple land transfer is that the Park District did want a covenant on the transfer, that if the, if the village were ever to abandon that, or in some way dispose of that, that the Park District would have the right to any proceeds from the abandonment or disposal of that property for a period of time, 40 years after the closing date, which makes sense. I don't think we would ever do that, since it's going to become part of, a key part of our stormwater infrastructure for that neighborhood. So unless you've got any questions, that's, that's my report.
Any questions for Steve?
Yeah, I do, I do have a couple, sorry. So, the green line on your little diagram, is that, was that already owned by us, or was that, there's a double green line up near Tower Road?
Yeah, so that, that 10-foot strip, actually, for whatever reason, when they platted that, it's two parcels. So the green line is the northern part of that 10-foot strip adjacent to the two north lots, and the red is the southern part. So we would combine that into a single parcel, but for whatever reason, it was platted as two separate 10-foot wide parcels.
And the drain is already in there, the storm line?
Correct.
So, when you guys, did they work on Tower, did that get disconnected then, or we just don't know when or how?
No, that, as long as I've been here, that's never gone any farther north than the north end of Bowl Parkway, so I assume at some point, maybe when Tower Road was rebuilt, they cut that off and, and connected the drainage from the north to Tower Road.
So they put the pump station in. Did I see a cost for that, or we don't know yet?
So that, we took bids on that project earlier this year, they came back, it was in the middle of the summer, they came back at an unreasonable time. We recommended that the council reject the bids, and, and so we're going to go back out, we rebudgeted the project for next year, we're going to go out for bids in January. The budget is $650,000 for the pump station.
Got it. Okay, thanks.
Any other questions up here? Audience, anybody have any questions for Steve on this, or comments? Seeing none, last bite of the apple up here, anybody have anything else? Hearing none, I'll ask for a motion to adopt resolution number R-90, 2019.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Trustee Wedner?
Yes.[1754.83]